Bring this meeting to order. If anyone would please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Facet, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Sermonero?
Here.
Mrs. Facet here. Ms. Hartzell?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Twodowsky?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here.
Okay, under announcements, we will be having an executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss personnel classifieds and negotiations. Procedures for public participation?
Excuse me, can we add personnel administrative?
Personnel administrative.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Procedures for public participation are the inside do cover of the voting meeting agenda. We will be holding everyone to the rules for public participation. I might suggest that when you get up and you are speaking, when you reach your three minutes, I will raise three fingers to let you know that your time is up and if you will please then sit down so the next person has an opportunity to speak. We appreciate it. Having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items only for the voting meeting? Okay, seeing none. Number seven, finance. It is recommended that board of directors approve the preliminary budget of 2011-12 pursuant to section 311 of special sessions, act one of 2006, as presented by the district administration. Do I have a motion?
No, so may I. Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Sermonero?
Yes.
Mrs. Facet, yes. Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Twodowsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Moving on. Moving on to presentations by public on issues. Are there any? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Got a second.
Second.
Voting meeting is adjourned. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Odom.
Okay, we'll move right into the superintendent's report on our committee of the whole agenda for those of you that are following. First of all, I'd like to say Happy Valentine's Day, everyone who's here tonight. Just have a brief report for the board regarding our winter activities. If you heard the phone ring two minutes ago, we just got an update from the boys' basketball game. But let me start by saying our girls' high school basketball team is currently competing in the county championship tournament. They've already won one game in that tournament. Their next game is tomorrow at the Sovereign Center against Mifflin, so we'd like to invite members of our public to come into writing to see that and support the team. The team has also qualified for District Three competition. The boys' high school basketball team is playing right now. We've got a score where we'll just hold off on giving any finals until that game is over. There's always hope, but they are playing Scuba Valley tonight. Our high school wrestling team, that kind of comprises our three winter sports, will also be starting their postseason competition this Saturday. For those of you familiar with wrestling, the first round is an event called section us. And also, we got good news over the weekend that our middle school technology students of America club competed in their regional competition and the entire team had a very successful weekend. The list of the students is rather long, but we will bring those students back for further recognition at a future board meeting. I'd just like to thank the advisor, Mrs. Holman, and all the students and the parents who were involved in that for their time and for their efforts. Pardon? I've been informed cheerfully. Also had a competition this weekend. I don't know the details of that. I apologize.
Is there anything else? That's it. Okay, moving on to curriculum and instruction. Update on half-day kindergarten implementation.
At this point, I'll turn that over to Mrs. Trainer. As you know, we've moved ahead with that and posted some information on our website and like to give the board and the public a little bit of an update as to where we're staying with that. Mrs. Trainer?
Thank you. As Dr. Odom mentioned, we have a general short message on the district website indicating that the district will have a half-day program next year and general parameters as far as the registration and referring parents to individual building websites that has detailed information, not only on the dates, snow dates, if that still becomes an issue, and also information that they should bring to registration. So that's all in place. It will be somewhere within the first 15 days of March. So by the end of March, at least, we should have some preliminary numbers to be able to look at for sections. And we also, on the website, mentioned that assignment of students will be by geographic area so that we'll be able to take the registration information over to transportation and have them start looking at that. If it's an afternoon placement, we will also be looking at where the child might be in daycare, where we'd be picking them up, and so it may not necessarily be the residence. So all of that will come into play if we start to look for students. I am meeting this week with each elementary staff just to give them an overview of their kindergarten is going next year and the process that you go through to legally remove the seven-year senior for, at least the process, not necessarily that they will not be teaching kindergarten, and how then that works in a seniority process through district-wide employees. And so they also have a sort of a larger sense of how that fits into the whole picture for next year. We also have identified, I'll call it a steering committee, of kindergarten, current kindergarten and first grade teachers who will be meeting with Mrs. Masara and myself beginning early in March to take a look at what we currently have in place, what is possible in a half-day program, and also to take a look at the new Common Core standards that the Department of Education has issued along with the Early Childhood Standards so that we're covering everything between kindergarten and first grade that has to be completed before we roll into second grade. So we're underway with the curriculum. Subsequent to that, we'll then start looking at assessments and the materials that they'll need to use and what will be able to be packed up. And we're hoping that that will sort of come in by the mid to the end of April, and by that time, we should also have some definitive numbers, at least on sections, that we'd be able to share with you also. So we're up and running. Any questions I can answer, Craig, or now?
Have you been able to work out the matter about that extra 30 minutes for the beginning and end of the two programs?
We have a plan where it could work, but at this particular time, so we know numbers and also the sort of the piece I don't have right now is who's going to watch the incoming students till the other students leave the building? And that somewhat plays into conversations on instructional age and who is going to be in the building. So in the best-case scenario, yes, as long as transportation can do it, I can do the program. So we at least have that in a separate plan, waiting to go and look in detail to.
Yeah, I think it was the position of the curriculum committee, well, your chair, that, you know, we all felt-
We supported it.
Very strongly. If that can be done.
She needs to work the mechanism out to allow that to happen.
Right, right. Because the extra 30-
We have the minutes that it can happen. We just need to know what would be the time to pick up students and bring them in. So that piece I don't have yet. That will happen after registration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board on this issue? Any comments from the public on the kindergarten issue?
Hi, my name is Craig Brown, 450 Woodland Road, Garthville. I've been to the last three board meetings and I wanted to talk over about the half-day kindergarten program. I wanted to make the committee aware of a new district with your private parents to find a way to save the full-day program. I have some material that I should let you pass out. Proposal, but should be pulled copies up.
I think that you were all, my name's Alenda Corrigan. I'm just joining Craig Brown. And I think that you were all presented with the article during the revenue meeting and during the last board meeting on Tuesday of last week. If you don't have it, I have it available. I can provide it for you.
So like I mentioned, I wanted to create a notice about this, the parents, I can assure you, there's a lot of talk amongst the data with parents right now about the possibility of saving full-day kindergarten program. I'm actually here tonight with about a dozen or fourteen, I call, post-parents. Right now, I think we have about seven parents online tracking us that are very interested in the possibility of saving.
I have to mention that that has occurred within the last three days.
Yes, we posted the message Friday night and by this afternoon, I think, we're up to about seven people following us.
And very interesting. And that is the six of the kindergarten class.
Okay, I just want to step through this really quick, a couple of facts that everybody knows. Last week, the board voted to cut kindergarten to half-day. This impacts approximately 300 children in the school district of the year. The savings for reducing to half-day kindergarten is approximately $125,000. That's correct. Last week at the board meeting, I read a newspaper article on a school district in New Jersey that actually rallied the parents together to raise funds. I read that at the last meeting and the day after, I actually called and talked to the president of the Bernard's Township Public School Initiative, as they call, and I had a lengthy conversation with them about the details about how they made this program work, and that's on page two. You can start to see that story. So some of the story points were, parents of kindergarteners starting in 2011 were asked to contribute from their own funds. If enough funds were not raised, a full refund would be given back to all the parents. The majority of the donations came from the parents of kindergarteners themselves. Donations also came from the parents of kids starting in 2012, 2013, and beyond because they realized this is going to be a repeatable process for them every year. The group was able to raise $420,000 in a matter of four weeks, and the money was actually officially accepted a few weeks ago by the board and the full-day kindergarten program will remain.
Hey, Craig, if I could interrupt for one second, I'm just going to treat you two as one group for six minutes, okay?
Okay.
If I could just help you coach you along, I would, perhaps you should jump to what you're proposing as opposed to going, you won't have enough time to get through this PowerPoint.
Proposal's on page three, second set of slides.
Right, so maybe you just want to sum that up for the school board and then that way we can-
Our proposal is this, number one, we'd like to privately fund $425,000 to the kindergarten district to save full-day kindergarten. The fund drive would potentially repeat itself. Each parent would be asked to contribute $2,000. We feel that's a maximum number. It really depends on what we could get from businesses. Again, the funds will be refunded in full. If the goal is reached, what we're looking here for tonight is a support from the committee to support us in this effort. We really can't get any, can't go any further unless we get support from the committee on the process.
So what we did is we actually contacted a lawyer. We do have legal representation to help us through this in terms of formulating a nonprofit organization. That way, when parents do donate money to us, it will go into the organization and then therefore we could donate to you as a school and not as parents individually, which would not go against the Free Act for Education or the Free Education Act. And again, like I said, we do have legal representation. Matthew Kessler of Douglasville has agreed to help us pro bono. Again, he's going to help us to set up a nonprofit organization and help us to formulate any kind of legal documentation that we might need to provide to the parents when donating money. For instance, if we cannot raise the amount, we will have a documentation that will state that we are responsible for providing those people that money back, full refund. He's also going to provide us some guidance with accounting. He has some friends who are accountants that can help us with the situation, and I think that it can be done. Like Craig says, we have had 70, around 70 people who have displayed an interest in this, and that was in a matter of three weeks. And what we're asking of you is to provide us with approval to go ahead with our plan, with our proposal. We know that we're in a bind. We know that there is money, but we're trying to get it. And we're trying to provide our children with good education, this full-day kindergarten where a child can learn at his own pace, whether it's slower or faster than the other. So what we ask of you is to help us with this process. We need to get statistics from the kindergarten class as to who is interested and who is not. It would, what we really would have to get to is that 70% of the kindergarten population would have to be interested in this plan in order for us to implement it. 70% of those people would be asked to donate $2,000. And again, that's a max. If 80 people, 80% of the kindergarten population expressed an interest, of course, that number would be lower. If we would get donations from businesses, local businesses, or even businesses from afar, that number would be less. That number is less than what a person would pay for after kindergarten care, which is around $5,000 to $6,000. That's the savings.
Okay, thank you. So if I could just sum up, if you guys could just sum up, make, Craig, exactly what it is you want us to do and consider in terms of, you're asking the board to give, I guess you're looking for permission to go ahead with this initiative?
That's correct.
And I see you provided a timeline here.
Yes.
So you're asking for how much time? How much time are you asking for?
We're asking for six weeks. The campaign went out on March 27th, the day before the second quarter meeting.
Actually, they're asking that if they raise this money, that we will reinstate full-day kindergarten.
Right.
That's what they're asking for, our commitment for that. Right. I just want to make sure that-
And in that timeframe of the registration, you realize that it would have to be advertised as it is half-day, that's official.
How does that affect Mrs. Trainer's timeline for? That's a good question. I mean, she's done a lot of work, and I'm all for this idea, but we don't want to spend too many wheels.
Right, so I think the concern that you have is, we want to encourage parents to go out and raise the money and do this. On the other hand, though, we have administrative responsibility before would be a half-day program.
Right. This isn't going to be a popular comment. I don't believe that we're in a position, I think this is going to send a mixed message to the community and we've made, I think, from what I can do, is we've made a commitment to go ahead with this half-day program based on the constraints that we're facing. I'm not, one, to not offer a reasonable alternative. I said this at the revenue enhancement committee with this group, that if they would want to take their time and really consider this and bring it back for next year when they've had time, it really came as the community and take a look at it, I think it would be wiser. I'll let Mrs. Trainer speak as well. I think obviously she's got more of the operational information on her plate, but I'm trying to look at this from a big picture. I am, it took us a long time to come to this conclusion as a group. We thoroughly studied it. We don't, we've kind of agreed we don't like it, but based on the physical constraints that we have, we know it's something that we need to do at this point. I would certainly think from an administrative standpoint, we'd be more than happy to cooperate with an effort that would take place over a longer time. But six weeks is a really short timeframe. We've begun to do things that we need to do. This has personnel implications. We're talking about the need to talk to teachers and having them sit around and wait another month, I don't think is fair to them. There's a lot of planning that's going on right now in the background, once we took that vote last week that I think is going to become very confused at best if we kind of stop doing that now. Mrs. Trainer, if you would mind taking the mic and adding, we haven't discussed this because we didn't see this, so I don't really know what Mrs. Trainer's going to say, but the mic's yours.
As far as the curriculum piece, you were asking about whether it may be needed this year or next year, what they're looking to do. I would still go ahead with what I'm doing, and then I have some plans. I have two master schedules built now for the elementary. So if you go full-day, I have the schedule for the end of the principals. If we go half-day, I have alternate schedules. So if, at best, people can have, at the core of what the kindergarten program has, it's not necessarily a bad exercise anyhow, and we probably need one, two places in the next six weeks. So that's, it's not a bad use of our time in that short period of time. What I've told any of the seven staff members that potentially could lose their positions if we went half-day kindergarten is that until probably June 1st, anything could change because any one of those could take a practice and become certified at, let's say, the middle level and then would just sort of, you know, redo all of my seniority because they may bump somebody who has less seniority than them in middle school and then they could start over. So they do know that there's nothing sacred about their job being, you know, intact or being lost until probably the June board meeting, but I tell them as I know something there. So I would leave that up to Dr. Odom and the board. It won't affect what I'm doing, and I really don't think it would affect staffing because every time we make a decision on a personnel matter between now and May, it's going to make me relook at seniority, just because each time it's going to affect a different person, so.
Do we have to make a motion?
I can take care of it either way. I'll leave it to you discretion.
Question. Mrs. Trainer, would there be any problem if we proceed along the path as we've now voted and if at some point in the future, whether it be six weeks from now or eight weeks from now, this group comes to us with a, I'm guessing it's a conditional donation, a donation condition on the reinstatement of kindergarten for us to, if we voted on at that time, no one would have been actually fired or terminated by then. I'm thinking that probably most of the members of the board, if we didn't have to terminate this program this year, we would probably all choose to retain it. I mean, I know that's how I would feel. I think that's how most folks would feel around the room. I assume it'd be a donation condition on that.
Well, if you remember, the whole reason the foundation was established was to raise money for whatever the district would need, and that didn't go anywhere. This is a similar organization from what I'm seeing, that they would raise the money and then do the donation to the school district. My question is, do you need any confidential student information in order to get your part done, and legally can we release that information?
I called Mr. Subers this morning as part of the curriculum. I called Mr. Subers this morning from a curriculum committee standpoint and asked him, first of all, there was some doubt whether we could accept, and obviously we can accept, any private charitable donations, and we would have to abide by any restrictions that that donation was given to us by. So we just couldn't take it and say, hey, still half-day kindergarten, we're saving the fourth-grade band, thanks for the money.
Page three, the first slide, it tells a lot of this stuff, if anyone read that.
Correct, so we would have to use it. As far as what you, we are not allowed to provide names, addresses, phone numbers, or anything else of any incoming students for that purpose. You're going to have to do it from a grassroots level.
And are you aware of that? Did you take that into your planning with your campaign?
I'm sorry, I was actually talking to the trainer while you were talking. Do you repeat that for me?
The concern was that you were going to need what is deemed confidential information, names, addresses, phone numbers.
Not necessarily. First slide on page three, actually what the school in New Jersey did is the school, I had to make it up surveys about everything.
You have to understand, state of New Jersey has different laws.
Right, and I actually talked to, again, I talked to Matt Kessler of Douglasville, and he is willing to provide us with legal guidance on that. I had, he knows the whole story. He knows what the plan is, and he is definitely for it.
Understanding that school law is different than-
Right, exactly.
-what he may be familiar with. But again, if you're going to be doing it as articles in the paper, posts on social groups and stuff like that, then, you know-
Well, what we plan to do and what we would work with us on as a team is to attend the kindergarten registration and maybe man a table, set up a table, and question, and this is what they did in the study with the help of the superintendent in New Jersey, and just question and ask for the patient of the, sorry, ask for the parents to provide us with that information, then they would be giving us that information at their own will, and you would not be disclosing anything or breaking any regulations that you might have.
Again, Mrs. Trainer, just so that we're confirmed, you say there's going to be very little impact in your aspect if we wait and allow them to, if we were allowed to move forward with this process and it came about next day, we raised $450,000. I mean, you're going to move forward, but-
I'm going to move forward, so I have Plan A and Plan B.
Okay.
But it's no different, I'm thinking it's no different than if you give me the green light for something else to take it and then somehow you find money from the state or somewhere else in May or June and say, put it back in budget. And so we have Plan A and Plan B. So I'm fine, I can keep going.
Okay, we need to make a motion then?
I would think we, I mean, I would think we would need to make a motion.
And then we can discuss it a little further after that if we need to. I mean, get it on the table, because I'll make a motion that we allow them the time. I mean, it's a win-win situation for the district if they can raise the money.
Question. We're in a committee of the whole, can we do it?
So can we go back into a voting meeting?
I would have to go back into a voting meeting then. Right. We could adjourn and go in-
Could we unadjourn our voting?
Well, we'll make a motion to adjourn this and go, yeah, reconvene the voting meeting then.
Would you, do we want to make a motion to reconvene?
Yeah, make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A and opposed?
And then I'll make a motion that we accept their proposal and give them until the 26th?
The 27th?
27th of March to see if they can raise the funds needed to reinstate first-grade kindergarten, I mean, full-day kindergarten.
Well, could you modify that to make it subject to legal approval or something like-
Subject to legal approval.
We want to make sure the wording is correct.
Correct. I'll second. I mean, in my-
My only question is, or clarification, that means that we will be cooperating with this effort. For them to succeed, we need cooperation, being able to man the registration tables of kindergarten, and also I see here something on Tuesday folders. So.
Well, we're cutting down on the Tuesday, on the paperwork in the Tuesday folders. Sometimes the Tuesday folders don't go home at all, just-
It was just an idea.
Okay.
But I think we need to give direction to administration to support and-
Based on legal. Again, that is part of the-
Cooperating, maybe administration can work conjunctively with them on how to market it.
Well, that was part of the motion, pending legal.
One other comment just to make out there is that, you know, obviously, you know, you're raising the funds to reinstate this for the 2011-2012 school year. That's not to say we won't be in the same position next year.
Absolutely.
And we'll have to reevaluate again.
Right, and I have to say that I have a son coming to school in that year too, and I would be willing to help the class as quickly. And then hopefully by the following year, you'll be able to open up contracts and you'll be able to think through numbers a little more.
Do you have a name?
My name is Alenda.
No, no, no.
You've got a group name.
Name for the organization?
If you have a name for an organization-
That you're meeting tomorrow night?
Mr. Brown, you have a posting on the social, but what are you going by on that list there?
It's on the front page, actually. We, this is a draft, but we tend to later call it the name of the public school initiative in the way around that.
And that's a good point. So let's bring that up. What page is that on?
Page three. Other points?
Aye.
Okay, so on page three, first slide halfway down under other points, it says, "Funds collected cannot be used to pay for teacher salaries." And I think, I think the issue there, and I'll let, we'll let the legal team clarify this, is that this organization is a nonprofit raising money for the school district, and it's not necessarily co-mingling of funds. I'm assuming that the funds that would come to pay for full-day kindergarten would have to come out of our own bucket of money, and then funds that otherwise would have gone to something else out of our resources are now being funded by-
Well, I think they also need to understand that the-
That's New Jersey, you can't even compare.
The $425,000, the $425,000 savings, the majority of it is on the salary line. So, you know, we can't say, you can't say we can't use it for teacher salaries because that's what it's going to be used for.
These are just my notes from Dr. Odom.
Understand, understand.
They shuffle money.
When, regardless of how this vote may go here, this is going to need legal approval.
Right, understand.
I can't emphasize that there may be something in here that just doesn't fly in Pennsylvania, and I'm not even aware.
Again, Mr. Subers is aware that we're doing this this evening, so.
I think, you know, I think the qualification-
I think, you know, I think what, I think the qualification of having legal approval is obviously key with this particular motion. What you got looking for is a commitment from the board that basically says, you know, if we can raise the funds by March 27th, that the board will reinstate full day kindergarten. And obviously, the big caveat is, we absolutely positively have to follow whatever the laws dictate in this particular case. And so spelling out specifically how the funds are going to be used in the implementation of that, obviously, we'd have to pass that legal hurdle.
Right, but for budgetary purposes, I think that what we'd have to do is add a line onto our budget for contributions, charitable contributions, not necessarily earmarking where that's from, and then add to the budget the additional salaries, benefits, and other things that would go. But there wouldn't necessarily be a linkage, but we would have to approve that change as a board as part of our budget process, which we'll be looking at in May anyway, right? So it sounds like that could work out with the timeline in terms of what we're going to need to do.
I do have a concern, your timeline is very aggressive. And before you go out there, I think we need the legal opinion on Pennsylvania school law. I know Solicitor Kessler is doing the legal part for your nonprofit, but I don't know if he's versed in school law, and I would hesitate that you go out publicly until you know it's legal in Pennsylvania.
Again, spoke to Mr. Subers and he'll have to give you, but we are allowed to take charitable contributions that are earmarked for specific activity. He did state that.
And to pay for teacher salaries?
Specific activity. I mentioned that the group was coming in and that this was a concern. Once the motion's made, pending legal, he may come back and
So maybe you could contact Dr. Otto's office tomorrow, and we can be in touch with our solicitor tomorrow. Since he's already started some of the homework, hopefully it won't be that. It should be done in a timely, just for your own benefit.
Mr. McCullough, I think the fact that we said pending legal approval.
I still think you're in a tight, two weeks, push everything, will two weeks matter, Mrs. Trainor?
They'll know, they'll know, we vote on it tonight, and if it passes a legal muster, they'll know tomorrow morning whether it's okay. If it doesn't pass a legal muster, it's a dead issue.
And they want to have a kickoff meeting on Wednesday. They need to know
Why the wait two weeks?
I don't even know that Mr. Subers is going to render an opinion.
That's a good, we don't know if Mr. Subers is going to have an opinion by Wednesday.
They may take him research.
She signed that tonight, maybe you should just be in touch in the morning.
I think we could take the vote, though, and let them at least move forward, right? And then if it doesn't pass the muster, then they just have to refund the money back that they've collected already.
Any other comments from board members? Just said, do I have a roll call vote?
Just turn it off. Mrs. Sette?
Actually, let's just read the motion one more time.
Go ahead, Mr. Shaheen. I have it all written down. How do you want your motion to be read?
That, yeah, you won't play it back. That, a move that the board allow the Daniel Boone School Initiative
Public School Initiative?
Public School Initiative to raise money to support full day kindergarten, pending legal approval.
Wouldn't the timeframe provide
With the, providing the funds are raised by the 27th of March.
Everybody understand the motion? Mrs. Sette, yes, Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Kudowski?
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, you guys got your
Thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck.
Wednesday, we'll be having a meeting at the Vill of Manhattan at seven o'clock PM.
I think we have a legal
Thank you very much, Chris.
Okay, we're closing the voting meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Opening up the committee of the whole meeting again.
Okay, under Buildings and Grounds, we'll move on to the transition house. As you know, we have our transition house is about ready to go. All the inside work has completed, all the ramp work should be completed by next Friday. We are still aiming to officially start as of March 1st. We are ready to hand over the inside of the building to begin operational setup to the BCIU, and after that, the BCIU will actually be in charge of the building.
Pending, that probably March 1st, or if they were, try not to
Yes, yes. And as far as our stadium restroom update, bids were open today at 3:00, 3:00 PM, that is. We are in the process of tallying that and working on determination of the lowest bidder. Just for the board's information, we received 11 bids.
That's great.
So we'll keep you updated on that once we have had a chance to run them by Mr. Subers to make sure they're the responsible bids, and we'll have that information for you as soon as possible. I continue Buildings and Grounds.
Any comment from the public on Buildings and Grounds? See none moving on to Finance.
You have your routine approvals for course approvals, which we'll add for our voting meeting. We do have another bill to Land Tech, there will be some minor retainage left for some things that we still need to do, some minor things. You have attachment one for that. We also have item C for the audit. Item D are routine budget transfers with an attachment. E are approval for advertising and bidding for private bids is listed. We also have the approval of the 2011-2012 Berks County Intermediate Unit Mandated Services Budget at $1,837,804 in our share. As you can see, there's $38,000, and you have been provided with an attachment and a copy of the IU budget.
Can I just
Absolutely.
There is I'd just like to add that there is no increase to
Excellent.
Believe, maybe
What, no decrease?
As Mrs. Hartzell just noted, that there is no increase to our local school districts for mandated services. I did notice that there is an increase, a slight increase in the payment programs. And I'm curious, what is included in those payment programs? Because I think they're using it, you know, to offset the increase to the districts because their costs are rising. So I know if you ask the IU, they could come back and let us know what payment programs that bids are, and if Daniel Boone students are involved, and what increase those programs are to us, because there might be an increase to us, we're just not seeing it in the mandated services clearly.
We can get that
It could be example, we had a child going to the transition house, their tuition's gone up. They write a lot of, we might use them for speech therapy or occupational therapy, and all those rates have gone up. And I'm curious if that's what is offsetting their budget. Like, we're not getting an increase, but we are, but in another way. So if you could find that out. Thank you.
Gee, I had a question for you, Dr. Otto. On the Land Tech, have we straightened out the warranty issues there with that company in regards to the, at a track?
I haven't heard anything back from Mr. Subers, but I know that's something like, I don't think, there hasn't been an issue that Mr. Subers would afford to make. But they have done all the work, so we're waiting to see in the spring if everything held, and if they did, we could have an agreement.
Did they extend their Well, that's the issue, is, you know, did they extend the warranty for, you know, the repairs that had to take place in the field?
Yes, yes, they had, I don't have the details for that, but yes.
I believe that was carried out in the next year.
Yes.
And the other question I have is in C in regards to the audit, do we have bids from this particular, Daniel, do we have bids from
No, we actually, this is the same company that submits for Amity Union in Berksborough, and we've had the same company since, for years before I got here. The amount is the same that it's been.
Okay, it's the same as last year?
It's $1,100, yes.
Yeah, could we change it so it shows what the amount is?
Sure.
For the voting, I had the same question, the three are done together and the bill gets split amongst the three entities.
We can amend the motion for the
Can I also ask Mrs. Hartzell, the school improvement money, does Daniel Boone pay for that too? Or is that, that's another way of doing recent, they get something called school improvement?
Just, item H, that the lunches and breakfast prices will show a 10 cent increase in this issue, and you won't know those angles.
That's enough finance. How did the 10 cent increase, how was that discussed in the study? I think I remember last year, the year before, we talked about raising rates, it hadn't been raised in a little while, and we came up with a number. I'm just kind of curious how this is being suggested as an appropriate increase. Was this recommended to us by the food service provider?
Actually, Mr. Perel, actually, Mr. Perel and I just spoke about it, and we haven't raised prices since
Yes, like two years, it's been two years.
This is the third year that we have not raised them for the school year, and just in looking at our prices around the county and with the new Healthy Kids Act that came out, the child nutrition laws, we're actually going to be mandated to raise prices and be at a certain point within five years. The minimum they're suggesting is 10 cents, so we kind of went off of that mandate at this time.
Was there an issue, I think, I don't know, we discussed this with the audit, didn't we come up short with the food contract or something? Wasn't there something that
As far as I know, they've met their guarantee every year.
Yeah, but I thought there was an issue, I have to pull my audit out, my notes from the audit, but I thought there was an issue there where we ended up a little short, they had to cover it, but wasn't there a loss on their end?
Well, maybe it may have been a loss on their end, but it's not
It wouldn't be reflected.
It wouldn't be reflected in our audit.
Right, they guarantee us an amount, so if they have a loss, they still guarantee us.
Yeah, no, I just remember there was some, there was some conversation about this during the meeting when we went over the audit. I don't recall exactly what it was. I guess my question was, is 10 cents enough? I mean, to cover whatever the costs are for the school district to have a program? Is it aggressive enough to meet whatever the mandates are from the state?
That's up to the board. I mean, that's what we decided to come with, was the 10 cents, knowing what the economy is like and knowing what's going on next year. So we felt we would start somewhere. But you certainly have the right to tell us to change that.
Any thoughts from anybody else on the board on this?
I don't think, 10 cents is, with the economy, that's what you're going to need to do. I mean, you can't go 20 or 25 cents, go with 10 and see where we go from there.
They are quality food, as always. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public on this agenda? I see none, none on personnel.
Like to just take a look at personnel, items A through C, those will add to those information, but if there are no questions on those, those are as stated. I don't feel the need to go down on each individual, one of us or any questions. In terms of item D, I would like to point out that this is a recommendation that the Board knew back, that we had discussed prior board meeting, I believe it was January, or maybe it was December. We had reviewed this with the solicitor, and what we would be doing, based on the feedback that we received and the information that we found, was that the individuals that we, since it wasn't just a small number of people that had affected, we would give them just a grandfather there, and that we would institute a new rate, just as the people who come on board and we substitute.
And I am very pleased with that. I'm just wondering if the D should stay with the grandfather and they should be frozen at their current rate so that we don't
Sure, we could do that.
Continue this problem in future.
Absolutely. Mrs. Byman, we may know that, we'll add that language to the, for the vote in two weeks.
So we shall be frozen at
Sure. We'll put the
However, Mr. Subers says it's best to do it.
Absolutely. I'll put the A on the personnel, if there are questions.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, see none, moving on to programs.
Board members, you have attached for you, our loan and enrollment report, which continues to remain stable, as it's been for almost the entire time I've been superintendent here. B, C, and D are trips, again, as you see, funded by the students. The other, the two are budgeted items, and the other one is funded by the students. And these are on your agenda because they are out of state, maybe by Pennsylvania or according to, and by board policy. Item P, if you recall, you asked us to take a harder look at some potential further cuts. So I've asked to have put on the agenda program curtailment, discussion on these two items, that a school foreign language and elementary ban. And basically, it's a repeat of what we talked about last year as far as the discussion. If we are looking to make further cuts that we're more than likely going to need to do this, we would need to make application to the Department of Education to curtail both of these programs. Just to review the process again, for the public that's here and from the board, I would need board approval. First of all, to make the application to the Department of Education. We would then wait for approval for those curtailments, which would come with either an approval letter or a denial letter from the Department of Education. And then we would bring that back to the board for further deliberation, at which time you would decide if the PDE verdict would be, yes, you can do this, then you would have to have further discussion as to if it's something you want to do. And if PDE denies it, then if we would make any program alterations in that program, we wouldn't be able to do it via the furlough. So that's a short summary of the process. But I need, from the board, obviously, I know you're going to need to discuss it, but I would need to have Mr. Subers prepare those resolutions in time for the February voting meeting, if you so choose. So I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. Basil, and the board for discussion.
Does anybody have any objection to bringing those PDE resolutions from last year back to the table for consideration by the board?
Well, first, I want to state, profoundly objection to the elementary ban. As you know, we have been discussing the possibility of funding the fourth grade band, that we've already talked about curtailing through some type of activity fee. The committee has not yet been able to work through all of those things. I think it's very preliminary to talk about a curtailment of a program when we haven't worked through that process yet.
I'm not aware.
We cannot charge a fee for an academic area. We've been around Bushwell that for a year now. It's very clear from our solicitor that if it's a graded class, we cannot charge a fee.
Well
If it's a
I just want to remind you that I have requested multiple times to consider making this extracurricular as opposed to a graded class, so that the program could continue in some fashion. I know that I've heard from many, many constituents who are appalled about the possibility of curtailing that program and who've expressed strong interest and willing to fund that program in some fashion. I really would like us to work that process through before we would ever consider a curtailment of even further of the program.
But knowing the way PDE moves, which is slow, to say anything, if we would decide to fund it via an extracurricular, the fourth grade program, and then we find that we need to do that for the fifth grade program as an extracurricular, we don't know if we could even go that way if we don't have a decision for PDE. I mean, if the goal is to fund it via changing it to an extracurricular, first, we need to know from PDE if we can make it an extracurricular and curtail the program.
Well, I just want to remind the board that this same topic came up a year ago at this time, and we had a room full of angry people, we had three sets of petitions, there were over 750 signatures, as I recall, you know, from parents, taxpayers, who were highly objecting to the curtailment of that program. And I think that this board almost immediately took it off the table when they saw what the public reaction was to that. And I really think we'd be going down the wrong path for something that's one of the most popular programs amongst our young people here in the school. And I think that, the long and short is, this would result in ultimately terminating our music program, which is a fabulous, fabulous program we have here. our music program, which is a fabulous, fabulous program we have here in the school district that we should be very, very proud of. And I really strongly urge the board not to go down this path. I think both of you are going to have extraordinary public reaction to this, very negative, at a time that, you know, there's a lot of people already very unhappy with us. We've already heard from the public how unhappy they were with this just a year ago. It just seems to me the wrong thing to do. Vote for education and for constituents.
Mr. Ross, I just have to ask, and I respect your love and fervor for the music and respect that, but we're at a point where we've got nothing left. We've got to start at least looking at something. And this doesn't mean we're going to remove the fifth grade, but we need to get a ball rolling if we decide to throw that switch that we have it. I mean, I look at the budget just as much as everybody else on this board, including people out in the audience, and we're down to nothing. I mean, I don't know where we're going to close this $2 million gap.
Or more.
Or change, or, yeah. Or if we don't use the fund balance, which several of the board members are saying they won't vote for it if the fund balance is in there. So we're even more than that. We've got to start drastically thinking outside the box. The paper, Sunday paper, which we all said we read, every single district in the county has a gap. And every single district in the county is doing some pretty aggressive things, from talking about eliminating kindergarten to eliminating busing totally, because they're not state mandated. And the governors come out and said, anything that is not a state mandated program should be considered for removal. Now, I'm only recommending that we at least try to get PDE approval and then reevaluate it at that time. We don't want to get down till, you know, the beginning of May and then all of a sudden say, hey, we need PDE approval and it's too late.
Well, Mr. Sheen, are you in favor of removing this program? You were the person who voted to take it off the table last year.
Yes, I was. Yes, I was. And I'm not in favor of it, okay? But unfortunately, it's a decision that we're being backed into a corner for. Unless somebody can, unless you know where there's another $2 million, I don't.
We don't have many options as to what we can cut, nor do we have many options as to what we can possibly charge a fee for, unless it's an extracurricular. To me, if we could move this program to an extracurricular, instead of, everybody keeps using the term pay to play, I think we should look at it as more, and people have been pointing this phrase out there, pay to stay. If we want to keep it, the only way we'll be able to sustain it is if we can pass on a fee. And we cannot do that if it's part of our academic curriculum.
Margaret, we...
No, go ahead, Dr. O.
We were asked, as administration, to come back to you, I was asked very directly, what was it that we could still curtail? Last week, we sat down, this is Trainer and I, I consulted with some of the building principals. There, we're at the point now where we can't offer any curtailments. This is it. We, I talked to Mr. McEnwell today, we're looking at the electeds at the high school. If we begin to slice them anymore, we're afraid that kids aren't going to be able to get enough credits until they graduate in a couple of years. So we are, we are at the bare bones level of, we can get creative in some other areas, but these, the middle school foreign language again, we can still offer kids foreign language at the high school if you would choose to do this, as, not to personalize it, I was a foreign language teacher for 12 years, that does not come with a warm heart for me to say that about foreign language. I'm a believer in second language study. It shows it's good for the brain, et cetera. I mean, there are just a lot of tough decisions that need to be made here.
I was just going to say, I don't want to, I don't want to jump ahead of the agenda, but at the, at the revenue enhancement committee meeting, we discussed, very early stage, something that we're referring to as adopt a program, where we can institute a campaign, fundraising campaign, that would allow people to donate money and earmark that money into programs, which is a way they could get money into co-curricular activities without them being extracurricular. And I've got some really basic information I could pass on to show you folks, and we could talk about it in more detail when it comes up in the agenda item. But it is something that I think we should explore, and it's an opportunity for, for the public to kind of see some of these programs that they find important, that, you know, none of us want to see go away.
And, Mr. Ross, I would think that we had an example here tonight, a couple of folks who managed to get organized over the weekend and assembled 70 names. The band program already has 750 from last year. As you indicated, that you were interested in doing, getting that to be a fundraising activity to support those programs. I think that department or that area of the school district is already very well organized and should be able to start a, start a capital campaign or an annual fund to work on funding those programs going forward. But I would think that would work even better if it was an extracurricular activity. My personal opinion is we need more levers to be able to pull in regards to the budget. And I think we need to ask the board for our decision on this.
I just want, again, make it clear, if I had other curtailments that I thought we could possibly do, I would be bringing them. We're pretty much at the bottom.
If we're going to go to PDE, is sure this is the only few items? No, I hear you say, Mr. Basil, why are we, after you're making a motion for only these two, for better go to PDE and slay them all out? And I think right now, Dr. O, you questioned that in the agenda, you gave us two, but are there more?
Oh, I did not. There aren't any others that we can curtail without.
Oh, sure there is.
Not without affecting, we've examined it, I'll go back and look, but I can tell you, you've already done that homework.
Without affecting the graduation requirement that are sitting in our strategic plan.
I probably have to decide on this sort of curriculum stuff. Anyway, I think everything, anything that's possibly needing PDE approval should be thought of and listed before we go. We might have one letter, one sort of resolution for ways.
If there are others, I agree with that. If there are others...
I agree with that as well. I think we've been saying for the last two meetings, that we, we need to look at the bare bones. So I think we need, nobody's saying we want to cut band or we want to cut, but we said, we need to know what it costs to operate the bare state requirements. So I think you have to lay everything on the table to at least see if we can consider cutting it before we decide cutting it. And you don't want to wait until May.
I think unfortunately, the bare state requirements don't match up with our strategic plan.
So I think one of the things we brought up last time was, you know, and I was going to ask this, is can we add on to asking for PDE approval, you know, a modification of our strategic plan that allows us then to take a look at the rainbow of curriculum that we offer from K to 12 and be able to pick and choose what works best from the K to 12 programming standpoint as opposed to what we're doing now, which is just really touching middle school and kindergarten, because, you know, we don't have the authority to touch the high school program because of the strategic plan.
Well, we've touched the high school program pretty well. We promoted 14 people this year, nine in the middle of the high school. So I, the high school hasn't gone unscathed in this process. And we're looking at further cuts for the high school again this year that are already on list, the cuts that we've given to you. I just would be very cautious of, I don't know what kind of cooperation, I could call PDE, I'm not sure the kind of cooperation they're going to give us to waive the strategic plan in the middle of that process. Curtailment is one thing, because curtailment is already written in the school code and it's a provision that you can use. I know of no legal provision to curtail a strategic plan, so I'm going to have to do some homework on that to see if it's even possible.
Okay, rather do this through the other way. Ask them what do we need their approval for? Ask them what we need in our school district, whether it be transportation, whether it be music, art, whatever. Ask them what we need their approval for, rather than asking whether we need their approval.
Right. Quite frankly, as a school member, I think we're doing this exactly the opposite. I think we need to look at non-educational things before we look at stripping the educational program. After all, education's what we're all about here.
What's an example?
What do we have in...
Here's a great example. We haven't even talked about transportation. Our largest single increase in the budget, a $600,000 increase, is increased transportation costs. It seems to me we should be looking at curtailing that in some fashion, much before we would curtail educational programs for the kids. For example, look at the high school. Almost none of the juniors and seniors actually take the buses, yet we run the buses past their house every day, and these buses leave the school half-empty and arrive at the school half-full. It seems to me, you know, if I were going to make a choice, I'd say, let's eliminate 11th and 12th grade busing. That would save $600,000.
You'd have to do high school busing.
Well, maybe high school busing. Look, I think there's other things to think about outside the bus that, that it doesn't impact the education that the students actually receive here.
Okay, but I believe that's a separate conversation to what we're having right now, which is what does PDE require?
But if we go down that path, we don't need to do this.
Well, I think what Mr. McCullough is suggesting is maybe we need to ask PDE whether we can or can't modify our transportation. So the conversation here is, what do we need to go to PDE to seek approval for? Or ask them to give us a list of what we need to seek approval for, so that we can start making more informed decisions and do what you're suggesting, Mr. Ross, which is, you know, let's get the whole spectrum of things that we can pick and choose from, and then as a board collectively decide what we think is best for our own school district.
And maybe transportation doesn't have to go PDE, but then we should know that now. That should have been thought of two weeks ago.
But at the end of the day, I think we need the option of making those decisions. Not asking PDE doesn't give you the option.
Everybody agrees with Mr. Ross. I think, you know, I mean, that's why I said, they have, like you said, leave the curriculum part alone, look for other avenues, other than sports, band, and then. Everybody keeps going after the sports and the band, but there are other things, which again, should have been thought of two weeks ago, or more than that, actually.
You know, again, again, I mean, if you look at what Mifflin, I mean, government, I mean, Muhlenberg, their, their proposal eliminates seven through, seven through 12 busing.
Then we may have some contractual constraints on that.
No. We have a contract that if we provide busing, we have a fee for that. I believe that's going to be touchy with them, but...
Be careful unless you know the contract, what you say right now. It's just friendly advice.
I read it again.
Okay.
We would have to then get legal, but it's something we'd have to look at.
I'm just giving you a friendly... You're on.
Okay. So I think, Dr. O, what the board is looking for is a more comprehensive list of what we can get to PDE for approval. So beyond middle school foreign language and elementary ban, what else is there? And perhaps a conversation with them regarding the strategic plan, transportation, any other ideas from the board members, areas to look at in regards to PDE? And if you have suggestions, then perhaps you can email the administration with what those suggestions might be, so that they can get that letter off to PDE as quickly as possible. We can, we can vote on that at the next voting meeting and perhaps get that letter off to PDE as quick as possible. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, now seeing none, any comments from the public on this issue?
As I said at the last meeting, we're broke, we'll be broke next year. I would suggest that all the maturation that we're doing to the curriculum, whether it's kindergarten or that elementary public to high school, think about filing for bankruptcy and what that will do for you folks relative to opening up your ability to open up all the contracts and start talking about 75% of your budget, not 25% of your budget. Your bank, your rhythm, that's not a place you go right now. I would suggest you look carefully at the potential of filing for bankruptcy. You might be the first school district that does it. The state may come and rescue you, but they don't want it to happen because of the government like. But what it would do would open up your, take the shackles off your arms, so you can then put this thing back together again in a very structured way that will work out for everybody. But you can't do it doing it at 75% of your budget.
Shane Cockle, a 39er town member. You keep talking about there's nothing else to cut, and I probably said it five, six times. You still have your sports budget. That is not mandated by the state, but you guys are refusing to look at $700,000 as of that budget. You are getting it. You're going to try to implement a fee to pay to play, which will raise around $150,000. That's still $600,000, $500,000 on the sports budget. You have a committee for build the stadium, but they promised to pay for half the stadium. There was, how much have they donated so far?
You're referring to the foundation?
Yes.
They never committed to a number.
That was them for the stadium.
They never committed to a number.
They never committed to the stadium.
No.
Okay, well, where are all those people today? I haven't seen them since that stadium got approved. You keep dumping more and more money into that stadium. You're up to almost $6 million. You have, still don't have restaurants, and now you're going to have to pull more money out of your budget to fund restaurants at a, at a stadium that we can't even afford education. You need to look at the middle school sports program. I guess to see the numbers, how much does it cost to run football? How much does it cost to run baseball? How much does it cost for girls' basketball? No one knows. No one knows these numbers. All they know is how much they donate to that sport program. I don't understand why every, Dr. O states that, he's looked at everything, there's nothing else to cut, we have to go to the state. Sports are not mandated by the state. I think you guys need to look at the sports program. I know you're worried about a fee to program into high school sports, maybe keep the high school sports, but if you're broke, you're broke. You know, I have kids in the sports program, I have kids in music, they do both. If the only thing that you have left to cut is sports, I mean, why are you going to the state that asks to cut their education? I mean, we're, does anyone know how much money we spent on the exact number so far on the stadium?
You're, you're three minutes, but I don't know what the total number is for the stadium. We spent the $3 million to construct the stadium itself, there was another couple of million dollars towards parking and engineering and legal fees as well. I'm quite sure we can get a total number for you at the next meeting. But that money came out of capital funds, it's not part of the operating budget, which is where we seem to be having trouble today. In regards to the overall athletic budget, obviously, we are touching the athletic budget. We've, we've put on the table, we're eliminating the entire middle school sports program. So that's, that's a considerable amount of the total programming being offered, represented 25%.
25% of his budget's the middle school sports program, which is on the table to be eliminated.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are looking at it, but I think the discussion that's going on here tonight is, what other, what other opportunities do we have for curtailing our overall budget so that we can bring the number down to meet the revenue stream that we have? And so, sports is part of that conversation, for sure.
And do you guys know the breakdown of how much each sport costs?
I do believe we have that information in terms of...
But what we, what we don't have, and you're asking it, is we don't have a net number, we have a gross number, because we, you know, you get, football has revenues coming in, all the sports have admissions coming in, well, that gets put into a pool, and they're going to have to work to come up, you probably come up with a net number. But, you know, they do contribute to the budget also, obviously not $700,000, but there is a net number that would have to be calculated.
Is there a way that the public can, at least the gross number?
I think the gate receipts run somewhere between $40,000 and $48,000 on the annual basis, and that money goes back into the general fund, our sports program, and we, you know, if you break it down, I've seen it on the activities committee, you know, where we broke it down, you can see how much each sport costs with the, the coaching stipends that are in there, I believe there's transportation costs and those, all sorts of things that are associated with each sport. And from an activities fee, or committee standpoint, we looked at that, we looked at how can we fund these things? I think it's too much to ask of individual students to spend the dollars that would be needed to support... be needed to support specific programs. So, we approach it from a different perspective, how do you support all programs? And quite frankly, the activity committee is a meeting that you can attend to hear that conversation, so that you have more information available to you as to how those decisions are being made for that particular fee.
Okay. And one more quick thing. I think you, I might disagree with your last thing, that you have a large part of the committee board program trying to raise the money to keep it. They're willing to spend $2,000 a child, to make sure that child gets what they need. So, I think, I don't think that you can put a number on what a parent is willing to pay, especially when you go down the sports, I mean, Scotty's event, you see ice hockey, they're paying $600 a kid for ice hockey. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Shane. Okay. Moving on to our policy. Under policy, you have a board with a second reading and the acknowledgement of revised policy 202 eligibility of non-resent students. Bringing back our first reading, the revised policy 114 extracurricular and co-curricular, which puts that conversation that we've already had into official language regarding what is co-curricular versus extracurricular. And discussion of committee meeting minutes. Mr. Baze, I'm gonna turn that conversation over to you, based on your request to discuss that.
Yeah. I was at a TSBA meeting in January, where the issue came up about meeting minutes and things of that nature, and then we were here at the other meet, budget meeting, it came up that the meetings, the minutes from the REC meetings weren't being posted because they needed some kind of board approval. So, I asked Mr. Subers to kind of clarify for the board, in terms of meeting minutes, what we should or shouldn't be doing, what should be on those meeting minutes, and so that we're conducting those committees appropriately. So, I think he sent around just today, a letter, we received today, a letter describing for the board what should be part of those committee meetings, at a bare minimum on the minutes. And since everybody just got it today, I'm not sure what type of a conversation you can have, if everybody's even had an opportunity to read that.
Well, except for, who do you propose takes these minutes?
I would propose, I mean, either the person on the board can volunteer to take the minutes, or-
Did you read what you have to have in the minutes though?
Yeah. It's a bare bones minimum of date, time, people attendance.
Right. The substance of all official actions, except not applicable to committee meetings, so you don't have any official actions. And then the fourth one is the names of citizens. So, you wouldn't have anything-
Basically, it's the four board members' names and the people that have a comment, and that's all you're requiring.
But it does say-
There's no official actions.
I agree with that, but it is a requirement of the law to provide.
So, you're gonna have a piece of paper that has the board-
Official actions. Now, he does, and I think we need further clarification, because he says, alternatively, separate information reports could be provided to the board members not attending committee meetings. Alternatively, so would that mean, instead of having minutes that have official actions, since you have no official action, you could have the termed information reports?
Well, we do report out. Each committee reports out once a month, right?
I specifically spoke to Brian about this, and he said, at the bare minimum, you know, you should at least be providing that information to be in compliance with the law. Beyond that-
So, with the committee, what would he say? You just-
Exactly what you see in that letter.
But there's no-
What time did the committee meet?
Okay.
Who was there? You know, you could have the agenda if you wanted to, if there was one. And then what time the meeting closed? That's all that the state requires, the state law requires. You don't have to do anything beyond that. Now, he said if you wanted to, you could put as much detail on there as you want. Or alternatively, provide some sort of information report for other board members. But that is-
And would that be public too, that information report?
No, he didn't say that information report, as you see in the later letter, has to be made public. That's an internal-
Wouldn't you approve these from the website?
No, he said, you don't have to approve the board minutes to put them on the website.
Can I, can I make a-
Committee meetings, I'm sorry.
Can I throw a thought out there for everyone? It doesn't say that they have to be written. At the last revenue enhancement meeting, I brought in a digital voice recorder, and I recorded the entire session. And I gave that session to Mr. Jacobs, and he's gonna put it on the secured school board, you know, where the nine of us can access, so that you can have an opportunity to listen to it. And one of my thoughts or recommendations would be that-
This says written minutes.
Okay. Well, it does say written minutes there. But, you know, one of my thoughts is, you know, why don't we continue to record the minutes and just have them posted for our benefit, and then we can see if there's any legal issues as to whether or not we can post them for the public. This way, people who aren't attending these meetings can also have the benefit of listening in and hearing all the details, not just reading through some minutes. I have it on now, just so everyone knows, so that you can, I also can give this to Mr. Jacobs, so that you can play this back and listen to it and see if it's something that you'd like to do. If you do like to do it, I'd be happy to donate the voice recorders, so that you can take them to your committee meetings. Just a thought.
My only concern with this was, I just wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with the law. And so, I asked Mr. Subers to look into it and just get back to us with what the bare bones requirements were, so that we made sure that on a committee level, we were upholding the requirements of the sunshine bill. That's all.
I think we really need to have further discussion on this one. We could have give and take from Mr. Subers.
Yes.
It's more obviously tied here, but I think the board needs to, and I think I, I don't know if I sent this just in an email concern with you. I know when I have been involved in executive session committee meetings, like a negotiations or meeting discuss and take notes, it's very difficult to be the board member responsible for taking those notes and still be able to participate, which leads to the question, who is going to take the minutes? And if it's possible, that may-
Well, Margaret, that's exactly why I brought the video, the voice recorder, to the revenue enhancement meeting, because I knew I was gonna chair the meeting, and there's no way I could take notes and really stay involved in all the discussions. So, I just recorded it, and then my plan was, I'm gonna go home, I'll listen to it, and I'll produce written minutes out of what I hear. But then when I heard it, I said, boy, it's really, it's much clearer than I thought it would be. I didn't think I'd have the clarity, I didn't think I'd hear people that were sitting further away, but I hear everything fine. So, I thought, let me see if we could put this out on the website, so the rest of you can hear it and make a determination for yourselves whether or not you wanna use it as a tool. Again, it could just be for your own benefit as chairing the meeting, and not, you know, you don't have to put those recordings out on the server if you don't want to.
Okay. Well, I mean, obviously, we can talk about, that's why I put it on the agenda, we can talk about when Mr. Subers is here, and he can answer more directly the questions that everybody's raising. Obviously, it's a little bit more brain than we thought, so-
Well, minutes, I mean, when you look at what minutes are, it really isn't logic, it's just official actions. So much more goes on at a committee meeting and-
Exactly.
Example, even the committee of the whole meeting, it's ever repli- We don't, you know, all board members are here this evening, but you will never see in all the histories that I know, that we ever approved minutes from the committee of the whole meeting, and it's at public meetings. So, it's probably to change the whole way we do everything, which is fine. I mean, we need to be in compliance, and it's been ignored. But since no official action is taken, what do you really put in? Just that you had a meeting, who was there?
Yeah, I think that's the bare bones requirement of the law, and I think his intonation was, you know, it's up to you guys to decide how much information you want in the meeting, in the minutes, and how that may benefit, you know, as a board, machinations of the board and committees.
And if we do, after we get resolution on this, just so the board's aware, we will have to then revise one of our policies, which is, oh, it was six, which addresses minutes.
Okay.
So, just so, keep that on the tickler, depending on the resolution of this, with board discussion and Mr. Subers' advice, we'll have to revise that, because right now, basically is what he says right there, the sunshine act.
Are those the committee meetings or the board meetings?
It just says all open meetings of the board.
Because we're being recorded now, which we didn't now. None of us knew open conferences, so we're there always. That's all I'm saying.
It's not illegal.
It's not illegal in public meetings, unfortunately.
It's only illegal if you ask, and he says no.
I'm sorry.
Technically.
I'm sorry.
I mean, it's not a violation unless, if, at the beginning of the meeting, it was asked, I believe, and he said no, it's a problem. But if it's not asked, I don't know that it has to be, well, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not gonna make that legal.
I don't understand.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
What has to be asked? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If you ask, if someone's recording the meeting, they have to say they're recording the meeting.
Okay.
If it's not asked, I don't know that they have to offer. You'd have to ask Mr. Subers.
Okay. Well, I agree.
But-
Okay. Well, it wasn't, put it on the, on the agenda a bit again, we were just in compliance with the law, and we'll have a discussion with Mr. Subers when he's here next, at least.
Yeah. I think we need to have a consensus of, you know, what do we want these minutes for? Are we just trying to satisfy the law? Or are we trying to really inform the people of what we're talking about in these committee of the whole meetings and, you know, other committee meetings that we have? And recording it, I think, is the easiest way to do it. I'll gladly turn it off if someone has a problem with it, but it's for my own personal benefit, so I can go back and re-listen to what's been going on in the meetings and really understand what was said, and, you know, I think it's a valuable tool that we should absolutely utilize.
What's official minutes for?
With the minutes though, when we approve minutes-
What's official one?
How do we approve minutes for committee meetings? Like, we just need to have more of a dialogue with Mr. Subers, because obviously, a committee is only four members. Is approval of those minutes at the committee meeting, and by a form with the committee? Like, so a committee of four, three people will have to approve the committee meetings?
My experience with sitting on other boards is when you have a committee and they take minutes, one of the first items on the agenda at the next committee meeting is, you know, approval of the agenda, then approval of the minutes from the prior meeting, and if everybody reads them, and they're like, yep, we agree with that-
So, that's a committee approval, and then-
That's a committee approval.
And that would be-
I don't think you can take it to a board level, because board members weren't there, so how do you approve something that you want-
I think we're, until Mr. Subers actually renders some type of decision, we're running around circles, because quite frankly, on the curriculum committee, you're gonna get the list of who's in attendance, when it started, who in the audience spoke, and when it was adjourned, because there's so much going on, I can't participate-
Dial.
-and take notes, nor has anybody at the four board members or Dr. Otto, and Mrs. Nyman decided to retire, so she can't come to each and every one of them to do it, so, you know, we're sort of locked.
Well, even with a vote-
Do we accept that yet?
We do approve-
No, we didn't accept that yet.
It just will say what the general topic was, that doesn't, it doesn't really reflect-
You don't get any discussion, right?
Yeah. But while we're talking to Mr. Subers, I think we need to clarify the recording area, because I know years ago, and I'm talking years ago, probably too many years ago, we were being recorded, and we had to get our permission before they reported us under this. So, I think we should get that clarified too, if the government's looking, and it's an option.
Okay. Any other comments from the board on this issue?
If people wanna know what this various kind of committees is, I was doing housekeeping this weekend, and in one of my PSBA orientation manuals, I found this. And if you read it, you'll see it talks about committee of the whole, permanent standing subcommittees and ad hoc subcommittees. I think it's important to understand, Daniel, we're a hybrid, because we work as a committee of the whole, but we also have standing committees, whereas other districts just have standing committees and only get together as a whole for their voting meetings. So, we're a hybrid. So, I just thought it interesting, since I haven't seen it written anywhere else, except in this PSBA thing, which is 16 years old. And then on the back is the pros and cons of standing committees, in case you would wanna go down that path of changing the structure of the board. It just gives you some input, you know, from PSBA. So, it's just there for your reference.
I think that's still up to date, because I remember reading the whole, the same thing about three months ago, when I went to the PASPA class.
They haven't cleaned-
They haven't cleaned that up at all.
Okay, so I can just pass that on? Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Public comment? Seeing none? Transportation?
Nothing bad.
Okay. Old business? Like to, if you recall, again, not to lose sight of the fact that we still have a pretty large gap, and they asked us as an administration to go back and further examine for deeper staff cuts and reductions. Again, these are ifs, obviously, they are being presented to you for the first time for your consideration. Again, these are not very popular things, as most of these cuts have been very unpopular, but again, we're trying to get to the bottom line. The first, we, last year, we actually avoided and did offer the potential of looking at our guidance services, just for the board's information, if you were to look at the potential for curtailment, that would be something you could apply to PDE for. We chose at this time not to do that, because we felt that there wouldn't be much support to make a targeted program in the school district. However, hypothetically speaking, if you want me to come back at the list of things that could be curtailed, I would have to add guidance to that list, and then you could, if PDE would approve it, you would be in a position to end the guidance program for all of our students.
We need you to think, as they say, outside the box, okay?
A long way outside the box.
If you can curtail guidance, then we curtail guidance. If we have to, I mean, add it to the list, I mean, it's gotta be-
Well, let me start where I started, like, with what I've given you. We had discussed the potential of starting, looking at a 20% across-the-board reduction in that program, which, again, if you go that route, we'd not need PDE approval, because that would be the demotion, we'd just need board approval. We costed that out, that would hypothetically result in approximately $147,000.
What levels is it?
All councils paid $12, 20%. We're gonna maintain them all, but reduce their hours.
And the savings?
$147,000 and some change, $172,000. The previous discussion that we had regarding the curtailment of ban, if we were to go through with that, would result in $108,000, almost $109,000 reduction.
That's the fifth grade?
That would be the fifth grade, which would essentially eliminate the elementary ban program. Also, the curtailment of all remaining middle school foreign language program, with the staff that we would be able to reduce with that, would be $167,000, about $800,000 to We also are looking at the possibility of an internal staff transfer, not getting in personnel and public, but for the middle school retirement, we move some people around and realize another $57,500 savings. If you add all these new potential reductions, they come out to approximately $481,000. Obviously, as I said earlier, the two curtailment issues would require board action and obviously submission to PDE for approval. Again, I just would like to caution the board, if you apply to PDE and they deny you, you can't curtail, and you have to go another way. And I understand the need to make the applications. I would actually, I was trying to be one in the middle of getting this budget solved, I'd like to add that as a tool, so I understand the need to do that, but if they fail, you can't do it. And there's no guarantee that PDE is gonna give us what we ask for.
Curtail means basically eliminate.
Right. Curtail, we can reduce anytime as a board, because you're changing someone's staff, that's called proportion. Curtailment would result in our ability to take someone, eliminate them from our budget.
So, even if they would deny curtailment, we could still-
That is correct. Yes. Absolutely.
A question, Dr. Otto. As far as the middle school language program, how many students currently take that program? Do we know?
You know, I don't have that in mind. I mean, Mr. Henkel's in the audience. Mr. Henkel, could you approach the mic and help us out with that? Do you know that?
Looking at five, six, seven, eight sections of Spanish, and you're looking at some sections of German, it would be approximately 200, 200 plus. Those students who don't take a foreign language, we need to bring those students who do the PSSA scores, take a reading class as a core everyday place.
Mr. Henkel, what would those students take if they're not taking the foreign language class? I assume this is a period during the day for each of these students?
We would have to come up with some way to fill that period with something. I was also telling Mr. Strayer today, and there are some options that we have. In the event that you would lose the foreign language program in the eighth grade, what are some options? Well, one option is you could run two schedules within the building. You can run a six, seven breaks- You can run a sixth seventh grade schedule of five cores and you can run an eighth grade schedule of four cores of extended periods of time opposed to going to a period, you can run a 53-minute period. Okay? If you do that, it just would be a little hairy as to how to schedule that because the lunches would be the problems. But Mr. Trainor, if I were working out today, we do have a solution for that. We could just add something in there because that would squash money. But we would extend the time period for the four core subjects.
Do the teachers in the middle school have the time available to do that for this, to cover that with existing staff without expanding, you know, your staffing?
Oh, sure. Just as opposed to having teaching...
To do eight grades, seven, eight, nine, ten, four.
And it just teach all the periods.
State grade.
I'm just saying, you just have to run two schedules within the building, that's all. And after, say, period two for a sixth and seventh grade would be 42 minutes, period two for eighth grade would be 53 minutes. How does that affect, well, the eighth grade, 42 in the hallways and the time, you know, those kinds of things, but that's just a logistic process. Can it be done short or done? It's scheduled right in the law.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess I'll follow up with the same question. How many students currently take fifth grade band that would be impacted by this?
I can get you that. I figure I do not know.
I mean, I think it's important that if the board makes a decision to curtail, to have some sense of who's impacted by those programs.
Sorry, I'll have that for you as soon as tomorrow. Okay, any other comments from board members?
I did have one other question about budget and I guess we're under old business.
Not yet. I think we're still... Oh, yeah, you're right. Old business, yeah, yep.
Right. At the budget meeting, there was a proposal, a suggestion on Mr. Tordowski about changing the size of classes in middle school and high school to a much larger amount.
I was talking more high school, not middle school. Just to clarify, I was looking at high school.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that I certainly appeared from the reaction from the audience in terms of what they heard and I know what I thought I heard. I did hear from several parents who were quite upset about this particular suggestion. So I guess the question I have for the administration is, is this one of the rocks that we're looking at and so forth? And is increasing class sizes of 50 to 60 range anywhere near what PDE suggests we should be doing?
I don't...
And then again, do we have classrooms that we can even do this?
We hadn't made that as a proposal.
And I don't believe she even recommended 50, 60.
We don't have a proposal to put 50 kids in a class.
I think we were having a brainstorming session and Mr. Tordowski threw out an idea...
Larger classes, that's it.
You know, I don't want to condemn anybody for throwing out an idea because all ideas are good and you throw up against the wall what you can and with stick, sticks. But it was just an idea and a suggestion. I don't think...
And again, you know, just to clarify for myself, I was looking more at 11th and 12th grade for some electives and I guess, you know, maybe it was a dumb idea, but I'm thinking if you can't take possibly 40 11th and 12th grade students and teach them business law or something, maybe we have bigger problems. I wasn't saying put 67th graders in a class and teach them Spanish. So, you know, like Mr. Sermon Harris said, I was trying to think outside the box for a few seconds, so...
Actually, I thought it was a good suggestion. I mean, I was, when I went away to college, it was a Division One school. At the age of 17, I'm sitting in a classroom with 400 students in a lecture hall very similar to this room. And it was an econ class. And, you know, no one was holding my hand to make sure that I was A, in attendance, B, understood what the professor was saying, and done my, you know... These kids that are seniors are 17, 18, 19 years old. Hopefully, they're going on to good schools and they may find themselves in lecture halls. I'm not suggesting 300, 400 students like I was, but I think Mr. Tordowski's idea was, hey, let's just think of another way of looking at this. If there's a way to increase the class size that doesn't require one-on-one or a very small instruction, I don't think that's a bad thing to consider. That's for the administration to take a look at and come back to the board with suggestions. Yes, it's a good idea. No, it's not going to work. Who knows? I just wanted to clarify that at this point. That's not, we haven't explored that in any detail administratively. I am aware of the conversation, but I just don't want the public to think that we've already come forward with an administrative plan of 60 kids in a class.
I would tell you, I heard from several parents who are quite upset about such a proposal. That's all I'm going to say.
There was no proposal made that I was aware of. But I think we need to look at our electives because if you look at it from when we looked at the class, I mean, there are some electives and maybe because of the class they're being taught in and the equipment and whatever else, it limits it. But 15 kids in elective, maybe it could be 20 kids in elective and you cut a session down, but we've got to look at everything.
Maybe that's something curriculum committee... Weren't you guys already sort of looking at class sizes and stuff?
We looked to see if there was classes being offered that had less than the minimum required in there. Mr. McMoyle was very good at making sure that wasn't the situation.
I mean, there's another way to look at it, which is, are there any that can be increased? I don't know. I would just say from a facilities standpoint, we don't really have many facilities that can accommodate much more than 30 kids in a class. We have a few, but that's something we need to, we need to take closer a little bit, actually, flush that out. Yep. I agree with Frank. I don't think any idea is a bad one. You'd need to consider them all. So that's just my personal opinion on that. And people shouldn't feel intimidated to bring forth ideas because how else are we going to, you know, think out of the box creatively and solve these problems? All right, but having said that, any other comments on A? So, it's on to B. Mrs. Trainor has a, I know she has something she'd like to share on either B and or something else.
Yeah, I just want to go back to your foreign language discussion, just so that you understand, next year, we are not teaching the Level One of the language. It's the board's direction, which it was last year, but this would be the last year of like German One and Spanish One. So what Dr. Otto is asking you to consider to curtail is basically just an exploratory overview course. It is not Level One. Level One from next school year on will begin at the high school. So you're not looking at eliminating actually the beginning year of foreign language. You're just looking at a survey course, if you will, just in case you had forgotten that that was something we actually talked about last year.
On to B.
I'm going to go back maybe about four or five months now and I brought to you, based on conversations with elementary principals about trying to encourage school volunteers and yet some of the issues we needed to make sure that we covered as far as clearances and so on. And I separated out the extracurricular volunteer individuals from your, maybe the homeless mothers or the filtrate parents, those types of things. And the conversation went from the two documents that I gave you to look at to one where we stopped with the conversation of should we require volunteers to have clearances every year or just as it stands right now throughout the district, when they first come on board as long as service is not interrupted? And that was put out as a question for the board to discuss and then we sort of lost track of it. So before I can bring that back, there's been a lot of conversation about volunteers as we move forward and we're really losing some staff. And I would ask Dr. Otto if we could bring that back so we could start looking at those policies again to bring to you. So I'm just looking for direction from that one.
I mean, my personal opinion is it should be maybe a little thing just because circumstances change for every individual. So it's probably best that we're keeping accurate, up-to-date records on these things. That's my personal opinion.
Aren't we going to look at some type of system? And I can't remember what it's called, the swipe system? And I think OJ Roberts had it.
Yeah, there was a system where you swiped your driver's license or something and it did an instant check for you. One, and again, I forget the name of it, but it was something that was brought up.
The Raptor system.
Yeah, Raptor. We did look that up online and did see that, but because, you know, I'm from the same side of Mr. Basil here. I mean, God forbid, we don't do a yearly check and something happens. You know, we're going to have, as a board, look at ourselves on something like that. So we should look at if we're going to utilize volunteers, an annual check. Or, I mean, again, if the Raptor is a one-time fee, maybe every time they check in, it's swiped.
We don't do it with staff.
That system does not meet your needs, I'm going to say it micro members, without...
I think it's just child abuse, that one.
It was very limited. It was not the information you can get from the child abuse clearances. When we called OJ and we had some information from them, so it wouldn't meet the needs of what you were looking for as far as the background of the individual.
Well, I think...
Currently, staff only gets it from the department. How would we find out if there's a problem with any of our staff members?
Read it to big.
It's only when they...
That's a problem.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Well, I mean, you know, volunteers are usually under the supervision of the teacher or an staff member, but you're not requiring them to have yearly. I mean, don't we want to be consistent?
Well, I guess if there's a problem, if we think there's a problem with only once for a staff member, then we can't, maybe that has to be addressed in a collective bargaining way that is a separate item. I don't know, but in terms of volunteers, that's something we can address now, so... Yeah, there may be a fee every year. Look, I mean, at the end of the day, if you're a volunteer, I think you're committed to the school, but you could pay for a background check. I can check with Mr. Subers, but I believe that under employment law, once you have that clearance, until you leave your employment, they're not required to do that. I don't know if there's a policy way around that or not. I can certainly check.
I do remember, and I can't remember the frequency, with my wife volunteering to do the Odyssey the Mind thing, she had to have that done, I think, almost on an annual basis, the background check. I know she had to have it at least once to get it done, okay, but to do that. So, I mean, there is a volunteer that having it done once, so...
And that's what we're doing right now, Mr. Sheen. Any volunteer, whether you're coaching or you're doing Odyssey the Mind, you're doing one time, getting all the clearances and we keep them on file as long as you don't stop servicing the district in some fashion. If you break the service and you come back, then you need to get the clearances again.
I just, you've hurt my gut. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board on this so we can get some direction to the administration. I just think that, I mean, theoretically, you could have somebody who gets the background check done once and then, what, 10 years later, you know, 15, 20 years without going with another background check so long as your service is continuous? That just seems a little, I don't know. I think we just need a little bit more proactive in that regard. My two cents.
I'm looking for consistency. I think we need to check labor law.
With the volunteers or whatever we implement has to be the same across the board.
Do we have a sense of what other school districts in the county do? I mean, I'm wondering if you could read some kind of a, you know, something in the middle to do it every two years or three years because it is a hassle, quite frankly, having gone through those checks myself, to do it and expensive as well. And if we're going to require that, is the board going to pay for that or is that the expenditure of the parent that's helping us out?
Well, there's how many clearances? Three?
Two that they're required.
Two.
And currently, for your extracurricular volunteer, there is a clause in your policy guideline that says that if they submit the finished product and a receipt, that you would reimburse them for the two clearances. And we probably get two people to turn those receipts in, but that is currently in a policy we're looking to update.
Right, but I think we're talking about basically parents to come in to help in the elementary school as volunteers and I don't know that we have the policy on that.
No, we don't. That is what I started to bring forward and then we stopped because we were having this conversation.
And I understand that for the most part, the volunteers are being, are the overview of a teacher. But, I mean, there is, we all can foresee the situation where the kid's got a bloody nose and somebody's got to run them to the nurse or something and you no longer have that overview, so...
I mean, I'm just thinking as a parent, my kid's in the school, I would want to make sure that whoever's working with my child has been, had some sort of background check and that it was current. I'm putting my child in the trust of the school district.
Yeah, for me, that's the basic issue, too. It's not whether they're supervised. If a month ago, somebody did something that's a volunteer in this district or an employee in this district that has something to do with the kids or something that they should not be here, we should know that. There needs to be some mechanism there. I'm surprised there isn't. You know, I don't know much about what's available to school districts in that regard, but I'm surprised there's not some type of registering service where you could register your volunteers and it allows checks to be done that if they, if there's certain offenses that occurred, we're notified without us having to go dig it out ourselves. It's a problem. I mean, you can't rely on something that someone's done five years ago.
We've been lucky so far, let's put it that way, that we know of, so...
Can you tell the board what the two clearances are and what the differences in between the two?
I don't know the prices. I know there are three clearances that any public school employee needs to, even in my case, or the new superintendent or anybody that comes into work in public school. Act 34 is called, which is the FBI clearance. The Act 151, which is the child abuse clearance. And I believe two years ago, don't quote me on the date, but in that timeframe, they added the FBI clearance.
Act 114, there's something, I'm looking, a background check, Act 114?
FBI. That's FBI. We call them other things. It's the same thing. So those three, and at the expense of, if we hire a new teacher or they come in from another district, they have to give us those clearances.
What, Act 34?
Act 34 is the state police clearance for criminal...
There is, there is. One's $10.
And I don't know, maybe if you get, I mean, some legal advice, but maybe if you have all three done once and then every year you run the state, I mean, I know the state base one isn't as bad. It's 10 bucks or so.
As I understand the law, there is no obligation for once an employee, just say a teacher is hired, to ever have to do those clearances again if they had continuous employment.
But I think Mrs. Tordowski's...
And I'm talking for the volunteers.
Right, I think her point is that if you clear the FBI background check and you're continuing to work in the district, then check the state police. The chances that you're going to go cross state lines to commit a felony and then come back and work are slimmer or a lot.
And then you don't even be requiring one a year or it's all three a year. Get three additional employment or engagement and then the other year.
Excuse me, the Department of Education has stipulated that volunteers do not need to get the fingerprint, the $40 clearance that go out to the ID board. It's only the state police criminal history check and the child abuse check that volunteers need to get. It's only bona fide employees that get all three.
And so we're talking about, what, you said $10 for the state police, $40?
$10 for the child abuse.
$10 they don't get. So you're talking probably maximum $30 for the two clearances.
All in, it's like 60 bucks?
No, the $40 one is not inclusive for volunteers.
So like $30 is what you're saying?
About $40.
I'm looking them up now. Act 151 is $10. That's the child abuse background check. And I'm still...
That's the one that I'm the most concerned about.
I'm still looking for the other ones here.
I think state police is, it's either 10 or 20. I don't remember exactly what it is, but...
I think it's 10.
It's 10, 10, and then 30.
All right, so it's $20.
So all in, it's 60 bucks.
Right, but the teachers would need that, but...
$10.
I don't know, it seems to me it's a small price to pay to make sure you get...
And I think coaches, I mean, I have friends that coach sports, Little League sports, they get them done every year to coach. I mean, I don't know.
Again, I'm all for, the ones that didn't get them all done and then that $10 once a year for the child abuse, I mean, that's cheap insurance for two, from two ends of it, not only for a volunteer but also for the district.
How do you even recommend the state police one, too? What do they do for... The child abuse with the state police, so it seems like two different...
How often do they do, like bus drivers? Do they do them when they hire them or are they done every year?
Just when they're hired.
Just when they're hired.
Just when they're hired?
Just when they're hired. Unless they get, you did say that unless they get some type of violation that driving and then they find out about it. and then you're lying down about it.
I mean, I think if somebody engages in domestic violence, just because it's not against a child doesn't mean there's not, may not be a propensity there for that to happen. So, you know, my thought is state police and child abuse, both at the minimum. $20? To pizza.
We'd have to change policy then, right?
I think she said that she's working on policy.
Okay, working on, okay.
So you would like that in both the extracurricular coaching and the school volunteers? I can bring you the document, sure.
I was so...
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I wrote it down.
I mean, even if it's every summer?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Is that what you need? Is that all you need? I don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you. So moving on, the, at last Tuesday's budget workshop, we announced that we were, some of our work at the activity fee committee, I'd just like to report that progress once again for the benefit of those who may not have heard it. At this point, there was a tentative proposal on the athletic side to charge $150 fee per sport, with the second sport reduced to $75, and the total of any family would have to pay would be capped at $500. Obviously, that's just a proposal at this point, does not have board approval. However, the committee does have some work to do. We're scheduled to meet next Tuesday, the 22nd, to finalize any recommendations, and we'll work you on structuring something to do with extracurricular activities. So we'll be working behind the scenes with that, and we'll certainly report out once we complete our meeting next Tuesday. I think the only thing I want to add to that is, this sort of came up, it's an activity fee for the public and for the press. This is an activity fee. It's not a pay-to-play guarantee. And I just want to make sure that we're very clear on the language, that we're sensitive to the fact that you're gonna pay a fee, and that's all it is. There's no guarantee that your child gets the right to play in the sport. If it's a varsity or a sport or something else, it is an activity fee being charged. It's not a guarantee.
Based on that, though, we need to consider what happens on a sport where you need to try out and you get cut.
If you get cut, you're not on the sport anymore. I think that's, I mean...
But your fee is non-refundable.
Well, that's all part of everything.
Yeah, you need to work that out, or your fee is refundable. You need to work that out because it's important.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not on the team, you know, I don't see how easy you pay for the sport.
And you need, then, again, I mean...
That's not a conversation we've actually had in the committee, but I would urge other board members that aren't on the committee to give us information, your feedbacks, so we can take it back.
Your fee needs to be based upon the active members of a team, a fielded team. If there's 18 people that are fielded on the team, then that's what the fee needs to be based on, not the 38 people that may try out.
And I think the underlying assumption of the documents that we had at the committee, at Margaret and Scott were there, is that the information we provided by the athletic director was the students that participated in those sports. It wasn't the number of kids that tried out for football and that could have been 200 and only 94.
These things get legs of their own, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. You're absolutely right.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that somebody that's not there on the, you know, the cooler head, don't think about that.
Exactly. It just, he had come up in an email or something else, or someone that had said, hey, look, you know, pay-to-play has been used in the press. And as a board, we were quite clear last year when we formed the committee that this was an activity fee, hence the name Activity Fee Committee, and it wasn't a pay-to-play proposition.
Right.
The term saying pay-to-play, some people are inferring that means they're going to be guaranteed for a slight time.
Yes, yeah, I'm aware of that.
That is not what...
Or you're gonna make the team, period.
Right.
Right.
An activity.
So we just want to make sure that we're 100% clear out there with the public and the press on that. That's all I have under oath.
And just before we leave go business, again, I mean, it's important that we, when we talk about the budget, yesterday's paper listed every single school district in the county's gap, and there isn't one that doesn't have a gap. And what it didn't list, and I wish it had, was what their budget was. Because if you were to go down and you guys have tracked this on an ongoing basis, the percentage of that gap is plus or minus a couple of percentage points, they're all the same. I mean, if you got a $40 million budget, you got a $4 million gap, we've got a 52 million, 53 million, ours is 5.9. They're all plus or minus that 8 to 12% gap. And we're not the only ones that are, and it's every single district in the county. And I would have to probably think it's 500 districts in the state that have a gap.
I would also like to comment on the information in that article to the extent that we know the process that we use here in Danny Boone to report what we believe were reasonable expectations of revenues for the state. I don't know every business manager personally, and I haven't discussed with every superintendent, but I know there are some wild variations in what people are predicting they're gonna get from the state. And I know that's impacted if they were to change their numbers. I can tell you, there are some districts that think they're getting level funding from last year. It's probably reflected in that report. We as a group have decided we don't believe that's going to happen. So that's already built into that number. So it's important. You know, obviously, I think in that article, we looked like the moment the largest gap. That may be or may not be true based on when it all comes out in Washington. So I think that's important to say that. No offense to the newspaper, I think it's not their fault. I mean, they're reporting the figures that they were given. But I think it's important that we're trying to be as responsible as we possibly can in projecting an amount of money that we think we're gonna get.
Well, I think we could take a look at what the level funding was going back to last three years.
There's a lot of ways. I think it just is important to say, and I'm glad you pointed that out.
I mean, level funding, we have a balanced budget.
Pretty much.
If we use level funding.
Okay, Sam. Okay, new business.
I'd like to kind of bring back this program we talked about, this initiative we talked about a little bit earlier, that we kicked around in the revenue enhancement, and we wanted to bring it to the board just to get kind of the board's thought, thoughts and opinions as to whether or not we should pursue it further. And it's, again, it's a pretty raw idea, but it's basically to give us the ability to take donations and have folks have the ability to earmark those things toward what they find important in the school district. I gave each of you a very kind of rough draft of sort of an à la carte type of idea where you could list, and I just listed a few that came to our minds as part of the, kind of the brainstorming discussion we had, where, you know, folks could get these forms and they could check off various areas. They could be as specific and as granular as they want, or they could be broader. They could say, I'd like to make a $50 donation toward middle school sports. Or they could say, I want to make a $50 donation specifically to middle school sports, field hockey. Or whatever they'd like to make donations toward. This kind of gets back into the kindergarten initiative that is going on as well, where, you know, people will put the money out if it's for something they believe in and they can guarantee that those funds are going to where they hope they would go. The reason we kind of bring it up now is because we'd like to kind of pursue the idea further, but, you know, we want to, we want a board opinion before we did that because, you know, part of our session was talking about bringing in possibly the art department and having them design some sort of logo or something that identifies this initiative, and having posters made. And really, having this, the way this gets sent out to the masses, that there would be signage hanging everywhere, all over the place. There would be forums like this available on the internet, and maybe some of our strategic business partners would give us links from their website to this forum where they can make charitable donations as well. There could be an initiative with the students, where, and again, we're just brainstorming ideas, but there could be initiatives with the students where they can go try to raise money through, through friends and families and neighbors, and if they collect certain amounts, maybe there's something in it, there's something that incents the student. If they raise $1,000, they get, they get something for that or whatever. Those ideas, we haven't really flushed out yet, but the core of it is to have a program where folks could donate dollars and earmark those dollars toward what they think are important initiatives in the district, which we can't charge for. And Dr. Otto, I don't know if you have anything further to comment on regarding that, but...
Now, the only thing that I personally, I thought was a good idea, something obviously to pick out of the box, I did have a conversation with Mr. Subers today. His only concern from a legal standpoint was the potential for Title IX equity issues, but he didn't think that that was something that would be a, you know, a deal breaker. So he kind of gave his initial blessing from a legal standpoint, similar probably to what we're looking at with the folks that came forward regarding donating money for kindergarten. Probably the same kind of aspect.
Right. There is another discussion, very similar to the kindergarten discussion, and we had that on Wednesday as well, because the folks joined us for a meeting. This would be the same sort of thing, where if, if you raise money for a certain program, if that program ultimately goes away before those, before you can initiate what you wanted to initiate with those funds, then they could either reallocate those dollars or they can get a refund of their money. There are options where they can just contribute to a general contribution toward the school where they don't really have to pick and choose on like an à la carte style menu, but they could if they'd like to. We also talked about donating time if they can't donate money, and donating material. You know, material costs us money as well, so if they could donate some of those types of things in lieu of money, and again, we're talking businesses and residents alike, so that would be more toward the business donations. And we also talked about whether or not it is a tax deductible.
We didn't get into that.
It was something about the EIT.
There's a, there's a specific program in the state of Pennsylvania that's enacted by law that allows businesses, re-qualified organizations to donate, they can donate sums up to, I think, $300,000 and receive a tax credit. I think it was 75% of the donation, and then depending what the steps were, it would go down. So there's a tax incentive for corporations to donate to nonprofits like school districts. And we would obviously research that program and promote that as well alongside this as an incentive for businesses to step up and participate. And I know what also came up in this discussion, you know, we have a lot of people in the school district probably work for companies that will match donations dollar for dollar to a nonprofit. So, you know, perhaps you have a parent that works for, you know, a Fortune 100 company like Vanguard or something like that, and they want to make a donation of $1,000. Vanguard would probably step up and make a matching donation in that regard. So we need to promote those types of things alongside of this initiative.
I think it's a great idea. I have one suggestion, and that's, and I know it's just a working document under the academics, but maybe you could pinpoint more than the electives, the things that we're actually putting on now that we curtail, example, library, electuses, fine arts, drama, even in all the department areas. Because you might have a person who's involved in the sciences like out of data, who says, gee, I'll support the science programs, but I want you to keep your electives. And they'd want to go very specific to science and to math, depending on where their area of expertise was. So I would, everything that we're saying, gee, we curtail, that should be on the other side.
Right.
And the electors are where it is to be, but they might want to stay academic, but they don't know enough about the academics to know the variety of things that they would be contributing to.
You hit it right on the head, Margaret, Mrs. Pennza. That's exactly what we wanted to do. When we first brought this to revenue enhancement and talked about it, these were just some really quick ideas that came to mind. Dr. Otto took a takeaway away from the meeting to fill in some of those blanks in exactly what you're saying. What are they? Because I didn't know what all those specifics were. I envisioned this being maybe two or three pages of many programs, that they could either, for each one of these, they could say, I'll contribute to the music program. They could be that general, because they care that much and they don't really care specifically where it goes within music. Or they could say, I specifically want to send money to the elementary school band program or the chorus or whatever those programs are. So these aren't just things that are potentially going to get eliminated or are on the, are being looked at. They could, they're all programs. They could be programs that are flourishing now, but the, the community feels strongly enough to donate more dollars to it to make it even a better program.
From a legal, not legal, a policy standpoint, after we had this meeting and went back, we do have provisions in district policy already that accept money. So the only, I think there's a $500, anything that would exceed $500 requires it to come back to the board for your consideration and how it, is it? I can check that. There's a limitation on whatever, maybe $500,000, $1,000, states that the board then would have to weigh in on how it's actually used.
Frank, I just have a question in terms of how this would be structured. Would this be a direct donation to the school district? Or would it be a donation to a charitable organization that we create that will be giving one to the school? I mean, the kindergarten program is talking about creating a tax, a charitable organization for those donations to go to, and that entity would be contributing to the school. Is this a direct donation to the school?
The discussion we had last week was that it would be to the school.
Right.
And then, again, as another takeaway, and pending the board saying move further, we were going to ask Mrs. Pennza on the financial side, how can you manage that? Is there a way to manage that easily? Or is it, is there a better technique that we should use in order to manage those funds? But we were proposing that it go to the school.
Right. The question I had is then, if that program were curtailed, would you give the money back to the person? I just, I'm thinking if it was an intermediate entity, it might work better for those parties. I was just thinking tax-wise, a person can make a donation to a school district and it's perfectly tax deductible if they do that. But I don't think it could be a gift conditioned on you keeping a program, but if they don't, I get my money back, you understand? Because then it sounds like we're paying for that program.
So perhaps we look at maybe a 501(c)(3).
Because then refunds would be going back from that intermediary.
Got it.
I think there could be some tax issues if it's something where a person got a refund if, from the school district, because it looks like we're buying that program, if you know what I mean.
Yep, yep.
And we want to just make sure with the attorneys that we do it correctly for the best interest of those taxpayers or businesses or whoever else in the community would actually be making that donation.
Got it.
So they actually get a deduction for the donation.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, I think clearly, you know, a foundation of some kind would be the best vehicle for this. This is what foundations do, but, you know, the board needs to, you know, we need to move forward here. So, you know, I think it's a good question, Mr. Ross. And I think all, this was just presented as a rough draft, and that's why we're here. So if the consensus of the board is to endorse this plan, then we will, I think, revenue enhancement committee, Mr. Sermon, I would like to move forward with it.
Yeah, we would like to involve some other folks like Mr. Subers and Danielle, you know, with time permits. But we don't want to do that until we had a sort of a warm and fuzzy feeling from the board that's worth kind of pursuing a little further.
I'd say, I mean, I suggest, and Mr. Ross being an accountant, at least get some points from him, that we make sure that it's worded from a tax standpoint.
Oh, absolutely.
We want these people to get a tax deduction to do this, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'd need your help, for sure.
Okay, so I think...
Does anyone object to us moving a little further?
No, move forward with it.